I would now like to call this meeting to order. We need an approval of the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We need to approve the consent agenda. We are accepting donations gratefully for $7,600. We greatly do appreciate them. We'll use these funds to further the mission of our school district and within the wishes of the donors. Is there a motion? And a second?
So moved.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We did have a recent election and we have three board members that were elected to the school board and we need to swear them in. I think Superintendent Duffin is going to do it.
So should we all stand together up front? I'm not sure what it seems.
It was the three of us.
Well, that's what I meant. The three of you. I meant we all as in.
We all as in those who are just selected.
And the three of you.
Are we having a question for the ladies?
No, we're not.
I'm not exactly sure the best way, but we're used to figuring out maybe the three of you can stand there because I have something for you two before you do that. Okay? It is an honor that you are elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office at this moment, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and other members of our school board in the position of being both morally and legally responsible for equitable quality education of every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing visions, the board with extensive participation of the community, the visions to community's educational future, and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the public schools. To achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, you serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students at our community schools to advance the vision for our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together within the administration and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Having signed the acceptance of office and vote of office, will you please publicly affirm your commitment? All right. Mike, Kevin, and Julie, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I hereby accept the office of school board member of independent school district number 832 for a term beginning the first Monday in January 2019 and expiring the first Monday in January 2023. Start that.
I hereby accept the office of school board member of independent school district number 832. For an expired term expiring the first Monday in January 2023.
Yeah, there right here. Okay. A term beginning the first Monday in January 2019.
That's for every.
January.
Beginning the first Monday.
When expiring the first Monday.
What we have is Susan's.
Oh, is yours different?
It's ours is different.
Well, no wonder you're having a difficulty. So I'm going to read. I'm going to. I hereby. Ready? All right, so please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I hereby accept the office of school board member of independent school district number 832. Let's start that.
I hereby accept the office of school board member of independent school district number 832.
For an unexpired term expiring the first Monday in January 2023.
For an unexpired term expiring the first Monday in January 2023.
All right, something else. I swear affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
I swear affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member of independent school district number 832 to the best of my judgment and ability.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member of independent school district number 832 to the best of my judgment and ability.
Hey, thank you.
Whatever.
Congratulations. You definitely passed the test, I guess.
Nice job. I hope that's not the most difficult thing you have to do on this slate. Our next order of business is to elect our officers. We need to elect a chair, a vice chair clerk, and a treasurer. I would ask for nominations as a slate. We have discussed these things and so rather than doing one at a time, I would entertain a motion to nominate a slate.
I'd like to nominate a slate. The slate would be Chairperson Lucy Payne, Vice Chair Julie McGraw, Treasurer Stacy Stout. Do you want to do committees same time or second motion?
All right, we have a slate proposed. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further? Anybody else want to nominate? Any additional nominations? Any additional nominations? All those in favor of the slate of officers, please say aye.
Aye.
And with that, I'll hand the gavel. To my left. Here, take it off.
Oh, hand it with the block. Now I'm ready. So the next item on my agenda is the salaries of the board members and officers, which is in our district policy 202.1, School Board Compensation. Can I have a motion to approve the salaries for this year 2019, please?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve the salaries, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes.
Consideration of board member appointments for 2019, can I have a motion? Do we need to motion committees or can we just appoint committees?
Say that again?
Usually committees are appointed by the chair. I think we do ours a little bit differently, so we have discussed these. I don't know if we really need a motion for the committees.
I don't think we do either.
I don't think we do.
You just want to say hello.
I'll just read them as informational item in terms of board appointments and committees. At the study session in December, the dinner meeting, the board gathered together to discuss the various committees of the board and decided to keep the board committees the same as this past year for consistency. So on our facilities committee will be Mike Chevalier, Kevin Donovan, and Julie McGraw. On the finance committee will be Kevin Donovan, Julie McGraw, and Stacy Stout. On the personnel committee will be Lucy Payne, Judy Schwartz, and Stacy Stout. And the policy committee will be composed of Mike Chevalier, Lucy Payne, and Judy Schwartz. In addition, we have advisory board appointments. Mike Chevalier will continue with AMSD. I will continue with the Minnesota School Boards Association. I will continue with the Minnesota High School League. I've got pages here. Kevin Donovan will continue with the Integration District Education Equity Alliance. Julie McGraw will continue with the MAF board. Judy Schwartz will now be on the ESQ committee. And Kevin Donovan will be on the Metro 916 governing board. Oh, there's more. Another page. We have some other committees we serve on. The calendar committee, as needed, Stacy Stout will represent the board. At the Community Education Advisory Committee, Stacy Stout will represent the board. The District Advisory Committee, I will represent the board. Elementary PTO, Stacy Stout will represent the board. And the Special Education Advisory, Parents Advisory Committee, Julie McGraw will represent the board.
And Kevin.
And so for the gifted and talented advisory board, Kevin Donovan will represent the board. Okay. Thank you so much. Next, we have presentations and recognitions. Julie Quincy, miss?
Yes, please. Thank you Superintendent Duffin and members of the board for allowing me to bring some exceptional musicians from the middle school and recognize them for their achievement in being selected for the 2018 American Coal Directors Association Minnesota State Honor Choir. They were selected from hundreds and hundreds of auditions. They submitted audition recordings and I kind of call it like the voice where they send in the recordings and there are members of our professional organization who listen to these auditions blindly, so we get a number, so we don't know who it is or from what school that they're from. And they were selected to be in an ensemble of 150 children from around the state. And I say that because we've changed girls and boys choirs to voice park choirs. So I'm very proud that some can be here tonight to have this recognition. And I understand that there's a recording from the concert, so I thought maybe we'd play a little for you so you can hear, like I say, how exceptional these kids are.
As she held me in her arms, she would sing. As I played my child's games, she would sing. As I wore those rings and a lullaby, I could feel the love that she brings. How each harmony would paint on my heart, and each haunting melody touched my soul. Bringing healing beauty from the hearts of the world, how profound these music consols. There were songs of laughter, there were songs of joy, there were songs of mourning and of fear. There were songs to chase away the darkest days, there were songs through the years.
So it just gives you a little taste of what they sounded like. It's lucky that we get this event here in Montomirai. Our professional organization loves St. Andrews as a venue, so it's convenient for our students when they have this opportunity. But in my ideal world, I would have been organized and brought these kids beforehand to invite you to come to the concert, so I apologize. But I do have that recording in case you want to hear it and I'll do better next year. So I'm very pleased to bring up some members of the State Honor Choir. We have two seventh graders here tonight and an eighth grader. We have Catherine Bennett here this evening. She's in seventh grade. We have Christine Gradner, also seventh grader, and Alexa Atkinson. We also had in the choir Ethan Hauptman, who's an eighth grader, Lucy Ross, who's in seventh grade, and Corinne Smith. So come on over and shake their hand while we.
And sorry, my word.
Not in front of us, you guys.
And Julie.
Yeah, Julie.
I didn't.
I'm asking Lucy, Barb, and Stacy, just try and find a spot in between the students there.
Your wings down.
Yes, you can.
A little bit this way.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a report from our student representative. Our student representative Luke Wisneski is actually at the high school right now in a choir rehearsal. So he will join us a few minutes late and so I'm going to move him on the agenda to later. Not sure when, but later.
Whenever you guys here.
So, next on the agenda is approval of the minutes from December 13th. I want to thank Laura for the minutes she takes every month for us. They're very helpful. Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the approval of the minutes. Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Next, we have our discussion items, starting with the calendar of events. Ms. Duffin? I don't necessarily have anything to discuss. They're there for you and I don't know if there is anything that you wanted to call out for yourselves in particular.
I would like to call out the 916 Gala on February 22nd. I believe every board member received an invitation in the mail. It's a wonderful event, similar to our own MAF Gala, supporting our students in District 916. If you'd like to attend, I do have a copy of the invitation with me. If you can't find yours, I'd be glad to share that.
Did we put together a basket or something? We did the past couple of years.
Are they doing a silent auction?
I haven't heard. In fact, it says it on that invitation.
Silent and live auction. Would we like to put something together again?
I think it would be nice to do.
Stacy and I attended last year and what we learned is that the basket we put together was a little bit pricey in terms of where it started on the.
The bid list?
The bid list and didn't do very well. And so I would advocate that we still contribute as much as we did last year, but maybe separate into two or three baskets, have a number of families have the opportunity to explore our wonderful restaurants, because that's what we should do is gift cards to our restaurants in town and maybe just assemble it a little bit differently. So.
Who's going to do it?
He's on the 916 Foundation Board.
It might be you after tomorrow.
Kevin is our new 916 rep. We don't have anyone on the foundation board anymore.
For some reason, I thought Stacy.
I used to be.
She used to be. Her term is up, so.
Okay. Pick someone else, I guess.
I think they're interested in you in that position, given your experience.
I would imagine.
I'll help you, Kevin.
All right. I actually do have an idea and we can figure that out later.
Let us know what we need to contribute. It'd be great. And maybe reach out as soon as we can to Linda at the district office, because I'm not sure the timeline is to get that into their system to make sure that they can put that on the bid list. I think we were into prom one year, we were a little bit late, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's the only reason I mentioned the timeline.
So Linda is Connie's secretary?
Correct.
Okay.
And she's the one who in the past has coordinated.
Okay. And I have her number.
Okay. Anything else on the calendar of events you'd like to call out?
Want to talk about MSBA conference?
I was going to do that in my report for MSBA. Got to save something for the end. Okay. How's the calendar events? Action items. Approval of the 2018-19 revised budget. Mr. Bill Manazzi.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the school board, Superintendent Duffin, thank you for the opportunity to present the 2018-19 revised budget, all funds for school board action this evening. At your place and on the screen, you'll find the revised budget document. And before we get started, I do want to thank our communication specialist, Alice Seifert. As you can tell, that is not a spreadsheet and therefore I did not create it. So Alice had a big part to do with that word document and the cover page in particular. So thank you very much to Alice. I'm having a little bit of trouble with the mouse. Probably user error. Sorry, Patrick.
Before we get started here, the general fund was brought to the school board for discussion on December 13th. It's important to note that there is nothing with regard to the general fund that has changed from that December 13th meeting. So what you see on the screen tonight is what you saw on December 13th with regard to the general fund. I have simply added the other funds tonight and brought that to the school board and recommending approval. So without further ado, we will get started. Starting first with district officials, as you can see here, we have school board members, district and building administration on this page. Along with the business office staff, this group plays an important role in determining the parameters included in this document. Certainly, this is a group effort and credit to this group and the business office staff as well for all the work that they've put in in creating this important document. There's lots of good information in this document and certainly I'm not going to go through it word by word. This is intended to be a document for the school board and for community and the public to reference back to as well. I have included our vision, mission, and belief statements and I'll give the note here that as we all know, we're going through a strategic planning process whereby we will be taking a close look at these. The reason I include them in a budget document is it's important to note, as I've stated previously, that all financial and budget recommendations included here are vetted through these nine belief statements. And so that's really our way as a finance group to reflect the belief statements and the recommendations that we're making to the school board from a finance standpoint. Under the executive summary, I'd like to call out in the second paragraph, "All enrollment and budgetary decisions are vetted through the lens of keeping expenditure and taxpayer burden to a minimum while continuing our tradition of academic excellence." It's really a two-way street, as we all know. Continued excellence in our educational experience while keeping our taxpayer impact reasonable. So that's really our effort here from a finance standpoint. Going down to the revised budget overview, what you'll see tonight is really three columns, right? So our actual financial condition as of June 30th, 2018, what we refer to as our audited actuals for 2017-18, and then a comparison between the preliminary budget that was approved by the school board back in June, and then the revised estimated position that we're bringing tonight for recommendation of approval. So really three columns throughout the document here. And then I've had questions and good questions on why do we do a revised budget, right? So we do a preliminary budget in the month of June before the fiscal year starts. Why do we do a revised budget? Why not just keep a one budget throughout the year? Certainly that would make it easier. The main purpose, as you can see here, of the revised budget is to update and include estimates used in the preliminary budget process, right? So there are many estimates that go into things like enrollment, staffing data, contract settlements, other factors that are not known during the preliminary budget process. And for that reason, we bring an updated revised budget to your attention tonight. Looking forward, we're just getting started in the legislative session in 2019, which is a funding year, right? So as we skip forward and look at 1920, we will be going through and doing some planning for 1920 and setting some parameters and some assumptions around a funding year that is not yet settled, right? So another reason why it's important to do revised budget about midway through the And then I just have at the bottom here on why this document is certainly one of the most important budget documents that the school board will see all year and that it depicts the priorities of the school board, district, and building administration staff, and then the community as a whole. So certainly this is an important document for action tonight. You've seen this slide before and it's just on budget process, right? So the budget process in our school district is really a four-step process and each step requires school board approval and is open for public inspection and comment. The first step in the budget process is the property tax levy, right? Which we just came through, the preliminary levy in September, and then the truth and taxation presentation in December. So last month, when we finalized the levy in the form of the truth and taxation presentation, that was the levy revenue for next year, 2019-20. So that really kicks off the budgeting process for next year. The preliminary budget, as I referenced, is approved in June before the fiscal year starts as required by statute. The revised budget is what we're recommending tonight. And then the final step to the budget process is the annual financial report and fiscal audit, which generally takes place in the fall, September through November of the year after the fiscal year. So now we're going to get into some of the numbers. And before looking at the numbers, I had a good question regarding a topic that we've all heard so much about, the federal shutdown, right? The federal government shutdown, and I just wanted to take a minute to address that a little bit. The question was, what if any impact is the federal government shutdown having on our school district here in Montomirai, right? So a good question. I have not seen any impact on our school district. So I asked a few colleagues in school finance in our state if they've seen any impact in their larger districts, some larger, some smaller, and then I asked about our professional organization as well. To what we know, we have not been affected here in the Montomirai district by the federal government shutdown, right? And we have put out a request to the national organization, the Association of Metropolitan — not AMSD, ASBO, the Association of School Business Officials, that if there is any impact as a result of the federal shutdown, that they would let us know. So as they let us know, we will let you know. First, looking at all funds combined. So I mentioned those three columns, right? So 2017-18, that's our audited actuals for last year. So that's really our base. The 2018-19 preliminary budget is what was approved in June. And then the 2018-19 revised budget is what we are recommending tonight. So three different columns that you're going to see throughout the presentation. So looking first at all funds, first in the general fund, you can see that we are recommending a revised budget general fund revenue of $39,376,000, which is a decrease of approximately $127,000 from the preliminary budget. And as we talked about in December, the main reason for the slight decrease in revenue has to do with enrollment, revised enrollment estimates for the current year, and then just a slight decrease in our federal revenue as well, primarily federal special education aid. So that's the main reason for the decrease and you can go on down the list. The decrease in revenue in the food service fund is primarily related — a lot of these are pretty conservative estimates related to student count, right? So I've revised our revenue a little bit downwards based off a revised enrollment estimate and predicting a little bit less revenue as a result of that. And I'm going to go over what each of these funds are in more detail later on in the presentation. Going down towards expenditures, you can see that we are revising an expenditure estimate in the general fund of $40,114,000, an increase of about 650,000 or 1.7% from the preliminary budget. As we talked about in December, that's primarily in the areas of wages and benefits, purchase services, things like PSEO options. We also have an increase related to our TIES fees, TIES being our finance and HR software system that's going through some reorganization, and then also in our capital area. So as we'll talk about later on in the presentation, we're doing a planned spend down of our capital projects levy or a portion of it related to a data warehouse that we need to invest in to help our technology infrastructure long-term. Down in the community service area, and I'll get into this in more detail when we look at community service as a whole, I'm revising the expenditure estimate up slightly. That's based on prior year actuals. Now, the nice thing about community service is based on history. Their registrations and revenue always, based on history, are sufficient to see any increase on the expenditure side. And the community service fund also has a relatively healthy fund balance. So although you do see a slight increase there, it's based off of an increase in revenue as well. Looking at a fund balance report, and so you may be asking yourself, what's the difference between page seven and page six that we just looked at, right? They look the same. The main difference here is a breakout of the assigned and restricted categories in the general fund, right? So you can see that we have assigned categories for four areas, assigned for building donations, what we refer to as Fund 25. So these are things like donations for MAF and then also our other building type donations. And then we also have an assigned balance for student activities, which we refer to as Fund 50. Those are things like our fundraising accounts. And so you can see those accounts are balanced for 1819, projected to be balanced, and the fund balances to start and end the year. We also have an assigned balance, albeit a small one, for a subsequent year budget. We have about $76,000 remaining in that assigned subsequent year budget fund balance account. And then we have about $400,000 in an assigned for severance account as well, and those are not forecast to move in 2018-19. Down under the restricted category, we have three main restricted items, the capital projects levy, or what's affectionately known as the technology levy. You can see that we started 2018-19 with $158,000 in a capital projects levy fund balance. We are forecast to bring in $634,000 in revenue, which as you'll remember is tied to the change in net tax capacity in our taxing district, and we are projected to spend about $701,000. So as I mentioned in the previous slide, this is a plan. So as I mentioned in the previous slide, this is a planned spend-down of approximately $66,000 in fund balance related to an investment in data warehouse, technology infrastructure. So that's planned and expected, a partial spend-down of that fund balance. Operating capital, things like our furniture fixtures and equipment is in a good position in the revised budget, and then long-term, LTFM, which stands for long-term facilities maintenance, things like deferred maintenance, health and safety, disabled accessibility funding. We started the year with a slight deficit in LTFM, and we're projected to grow our way out of that from a fund balance standpoint at the end of 2018-19. Now, food service, community ed, debt service, and on down the line, those are the same items that you saw on the previous page, so I won't go over those in great detail. In the general fund, the unassigned fund balance, this 4.5% figure, that's a familiar number from when Jim Eikten from MMKR came and presented the auto-report for 2017-18, and you can see where we're projected to end 2000 at June 30, 2018. We're projected to decrease slightly, and as we've mentioned before, it'll be important that the 2018-20 budget is balanced, and we will really start that work here after we have a revised 2018-19 budget to make sure that we're either balanced or have a surplus so that that figure does not go lower in 2019-20. Shifting into some enrollment history and projections. So our enrollment model, as we all know in Montomedi, is a little bit unique, whereby we generally enroll approximately 180, 185 kindergarten students, and we graduate about 100 students 13 years later, right? So it's important that we're able to monitor grade progression ratios and understand our open enrollment process so that we can continue to make this an important part of our budgeting process. So what I have here at your place is enrollment history for the previous four years, our enrollment target for the current year, and then our revised enrollment projections. So it should be noted that our enrollment projections below do not include PSEO or ECSE, which stands for early childhood special education students. These are simply kindergarten through 12th grade students in seats. And you can see our enrollment target for 2018-19 at the 3,288 number, and we are recommending a decrease of about 17 students down to 3270, reflecting a closer estimate on our actual enrollment for 2018-19. So going forward, as we look at 1920, this is an item that we would like to, long-term, be reversed, right? So where we are projecting, or we're having a target, and then we're coming in at or slightly above, right? So if we're coming in at or slightly above, that'll cause a slight increase in revenue and a good variance versus a decrease in revenue. So that's one thing to note and focus on going forward. So the second part of the document here is looking at each fund in additional detail. So first, starting with the general fund, I won't read what each fund is to you. You know what that is, but for our viewing audience, if they want to know what the general fund is, it's basically anything that's not accounted for in another fund, right? So important to note that expenditures in the general fund do include long-term facilities maintenance, operating capital, and the capital projects levy program, right? So these are restricted categories that are accounted for in the general fund. So these can and do fluctuate considerably based on projects, and that can impact the overall view of the district's funding picture. And I did talk about the data warehouse and the capital projects levy. So in the general fund, you can see the change from the preliminary to the revised, and I did review this before, but the main change here relates to a decrease in federal aid related to a decreased budget in federal special education aid, and then on the state aid side, a slight decrease related to our enrollment count. And I realize that this looks flat, or actually a little bit of an increase. There are a lot of moving parts within that $8.7 million, right? So our formula aid tied to student count is actually down slightly, whereas some of our other categorical aids have changed so that that is relatively flat. But within that, you do see that decreased student count estimate reflected. And then on the expenditure side, I did touch on this as well, the main changes here in the purchase service area and then down under capital. So as I mentioned, the expenditures are up about $650,000 from preliminary, related primarily to wages and benefits, contract settlements, purchase services, things like post-secondary enrollment option invoices, ties, and then also our transportation. So we have seen some increase in transportation expenditures, and that's reflected under the purchase services as well, because we do contract out for our transportation. Shifting to an important slide regarding our fund balance policy. So fund balance policy analysis, we do, the school board does have School Board Policy 714 in place, which states that we would strive to maintain an unassigned fund balance at 8%. So as we all know, at June 30, 2018, we were below that at 4.5%. We are projected to drop to 2.2% as of June 30, 2019. And I'm repeating myself, but it is critical that we do balance or have a surplus in 2019-20 in order to stop our decline in our fund balance. Certainly, we appreciate the generosity of our voting public, and the vote and replace and the voter-approved referendum from November will certainly help, and that was important. But as we know, budget adjustments will still continue to be made, and as long as that underfunding at the state level continues, and that is such a large percentage of our bottom line, budget adjustments will need to be implemented in school districts all across the state. It should be noted that per policy, budget items in the current year, such as classroom supplies, materials, membership dues have not been increased, and that's not a change from the preliminary budget. And here at the bottom, you can see our unassigned fund balance percentage. So in 2014-15, we had an unassigned general fund balance percentage of 8.3%. We've topped out in 15-16 at about 9.6. To put that in a number format, that's about 3.5 million. And then we've had a decline since then, a significant decline from 2016-17 to 2018, which is why we went through that difficult budget process a year ago. And we have made good strides. We're certainly on the right track, but the enrollment process in the 2019-20 budget session will certainly be an important one for our school district. Looking at a couple of other illustrations here, first, the general fund by program. So this is just another way to look at general fund expenditures. Instead of by looking at cost object, we're looking by cost program. So you can see our 2018-18 actual, the preliminary budget, and then the revised budget. So obviously, our large moving items here are in special education, instruction, and then down under people support services, which is really our transportation, and some of our other contractual costs. And then our sites and buildings, that's primarily that data warehouse and the capital projects levy that we talked about. And I did want to make a note regarding special education. So this is always a difficult budget area, as we all know. We certainly have the best of intentions in the finance area, but the revenue for this year is largely based on prior-year expenditures, right? So that makes budgeting a little bit of a difficult task. And then there have been changes to the special ed funding formula that we won't get into great detail, but those two things combined with the fact that special education needs fluctuate from year to year, and they can fluctuate by a large dollar amount, makes the special ed budget always a difficult one to pinpoint. Certainly, we do the best we can with the information that we know, and we'll continue to do so, but that is one for the board, as you know, and then for the viewing audience, that it's really, that is our most difficult target in the budget, is the special ed area. Now, looking at personnel, and you do have an updated personnel sheet at your place that Laura was able to put there tonight, and I want to go over that just a little And the one on your screen is updated as well. So the 2017-18 FTEs, which stands for full-time equivalent, and then 2018-19. So you can see that in the teacher area, we are down about 6.5 FTEs from 2017 to 2019. And then in the paraprofessional area, we're up, primarily based on need, about eight FTEs. You can see in the principals, we went from 6.92 down to 5.92. We do have the Wildwood principal job, as we all know, being shared by two administrators in 2018-19. And then down under unaffiliated, you can see that there's a -- oh, I'm sorry, this is not updated on your screen. At your place, it's updated. The unaffiliated number in 2018-19 is actually 36.13. So the reason for the variance here is the 2018-19 unaffiliated FTEs contain all community ed staff, whereas the 2017-18 did not contain all community ed staff. And then things like seasonal casual community ed, so MAC staffing, and then extracurricular FTE is not included in the calculations that you have at your place. And just wanted to include the personnel as part of the budget conversation because it is such a big, big part of our organization. Looking at some of the other ancillary funds, and I will go through these relatively quickly because there's not a lot of change in a lot of them from preliminary. So you can see in the food service fund, we do have our lunch and breakfast prices. These are unchanged, obviously, from the beginning of the year than what you saw in the preliminary budget. The important item of note in the food service fund is in the bottom here, where the Montomedi School Board voted on May 10 to exercise the second renewal term with the Stillwater School District for the provision of food services for 2019. So we executed the second-year renewal option, and after we get beyond the revised budget, we'll need to make that conversation part of the 2019-20 planning process and what we're going to do with that director role in the food service fund. So as you can see, I'm projecting just a very small deficit here, primarily related to a conservative estimate in revenue, and then just a revised downwards based on that student count. Going now to the community education fund. So as we all know, the four main areas of community education are obviously community ed, early childhood family education, school readiness, and adult basic education. Community ed historically has had a healthy fund balance and has been able to balance their budget pretty well. And as you can see here, I'm projecting a slight deficit in community ed. This is a conservative estimate. I do expect our revenue to come in slightly higher than this based on participation, and these are updated contract settlements from preliminary. Going now to the debt service fund. So the debt service fund records revenue and expenditures on our voter-approved and outstanding bonded indebtedness. And primarily, what you see here on the revenue side is tax levy to pay those bond, to pay those premium and interest payments, and then the, obviously, that's the expenditure side. So the bulk of this on the expenditure side, the 4.78 million, not entirely, but the bulk of it is related to our Wildwood building bond payment, and then also our abatement bond payment. So that's the bulk of that 4.7 million, and as you can see, that fund is relatively balanced here with just a very small deficit in 2018-19. OPEB. OPEB stands for other post-employment benefits, and that's used to record revenue and expenditures for post-employment benefits. So we did issue, the school district did issue bonds in April 2009 and established trust for paying those OPEB liabilities. So you can see that that fund is also balanced, and we do finish paying on our OPEB debt service payments in fiscal year 2024. Although, that sounds like a big number, it's 2019 already, and we will come up to that before we know it. So important item of note in the OPEB debt service fund. Internal service fund. So this is our health insurance expenditures and revenue to pay for the high-deductible medical insurance plan. This is somewhat of a wild card, and I do have this budgeted to be balanced. Obviously, you can see there was a pretty big movement in the prior year. We will keep an eye on this. This is one that's very difficult to budget. We did go to a January 1 renewal of our health insurance premium, which is different than the previous fiscal year. We've gone to a calendar year. So we'll continue to track that and the impact that this may have on our bottom line in the internal service fund. And then finally, to the OPEB trust fund, this one always throws people for a loop because it is in a deficit position. It's forecast to be in a deficit position. Really, what this is are the expected payments out of that trust, right? So the $25,000 in revenue, that's our budget for interest revenue in that OPEB trust, and then the $203,000 in expenditures, that's our budget for expected benefit payments, OPEB payments in 2018-19. And you can see that our OPEB fund balance, they refer to it as net assets, as of June 30, 2018, was 1.35 million. So we are spending that trust fund down on those payments. Getting into some supplemental information, so if for some reason you had a burning desire to learn more about expenditures by cost object or expenditures by program, you do have the definitions of both of those here. Obviously, I'll save you the trouble and not read those to you here at the podium tonight. And so with that, I'll go to the summary. Obviously, you can see there, Statute 123B.77 requires school districts to approve their preliminary budget before the start of the fiscal year. We did that on June 14 before the start of this school year. So our grand total revised budget revenues are $53,501,000. The grand total revised budget expenditures are $54,615,000. We would recommend approval of the funds, and before I finish, I just want to finish where I started by thanking the school board, building and district administration, and then also my business office staff for the work that they put in getting this document[1588.33] work that they put in getting this document put together. It's certainly a group effort.
We've seen this information before, so thank you coming, coming back and presenting to us again. Any other questions or comments?
Julie.
Oh, I'm sorry. Julie?
So I just wanted to thank you for explaining how these problems have occurred and for repointing out how our special education budget is such an issue. And at our study session, I shared with everybody that that topic is, is one that MSBA will be legislating for at the Capitol this year, is a predictable and equitable special ed funding formula eliminating the cap and all returns for transportation. So we're keeping our fingers crossed so everyone could have a more predictable budget, that this is not just in Montomedi and it's everywhere.
You have any questions or comments? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the revised budget, please?
So both.
Thank you. Second. Motion and second to approve the twenty eighteen nineteen revised budget. Any other discussion?
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay. Next, we have school board committee reports. AMSD.
Well, Barb kind of did that for me on her report last week, so it's kind of in the documents there, but we did, they did a legislative preview over at Quora last Friday, and it was really nice to see the legislators, the senators that were there. And they had a panel talking about, you know, what the priorities are and some question and answers. Lot of people were there, and I think it was, I think we're going to be in for an interesting, interesting session, and I think it'll be, Chuck Uyghur really, really was very passionate and really passionate about the special ed formula, and he's a real big advocate for our schools. But, so it was very, very, very interesting.
I understood there were about two hundred people there. Many legislators came.
Yeah, it was just a lot, yep. It's pretty cool.
The space was very nice.
It's a neat space.
The space was very nice.
Really nice.
And then Chuck Uyghur also has a community forum on Saturday. I think some of us usually attend that forum.
I saw that on the, yeah.
Saturday at nine o'clock, I think.
At Century.
At Century College. I know he's hosting another one with Maplewood Library, and some of the other representatives are hosting open houses this weekend as well. If you want an opportunity to reach out to legislators, that would be a good time to do that. Montomedi High Area Education Foundation. Julie?
I don't have an update since, since the last, I don't, yeah, since the last time. So I'm assuming the fall fundraiser is wrapped up, and we'll have a meeting soon, so I'll have an update at our next meeting.
It is wrapped up, although we always take donations. And preliminarily, it looks, the community has been very generous.
And just a reminder to all the students.
That are watching at home that the scholarships are, are open right now, right?
They're watching.
Their parents are watching.
Yes, their parents are watching.
Pass that word along. Okay. And so, School Boards Association, the board has not met since our last meeting, but we do have the leadership conference coming up, and a number of us are presenting. But we also have a group of students who will be presenting at the conference. They will be in the showcase. So Thursday, I know we're all going to be there for the recognition luncheon. If you could possibly before or after that recognition luncheon, go into the exhibit hall and visit our students. I told them we would all make an effort to come by. This is our media, our event, our music and event broadcasting class. They are the group of students who run the basketball games, the scoreboard, they film all our music and other events, they run our YouTube channels for us. So even right now, if you want to watch the ongoing basketball game, you could tune into our YouTube channel, and that's completely run by students. And so that group of students will be at MSBA showcasing their work. They're bringing a truckload of equipment, so they will see their equipment and what they're using and have permission from their high school teachers, thankfully, to miss their finals that day. And we'll be taking those early, but we'll be at the showcase. I hope you can stop by and see them. Community Education will also be there. We have some seniors from our community accompanying Kathy Wyland to showcase our work with the seniors in our community, which will be hopefully close by so we can visit both at the same time. Nine sixteen board.
Last night was our organizational meeting for the year, much like this one. Couple changes. The chairperson changed, and Mike Potatik is now the chair of Stillwater Schools. He's not the chair of nine sixteen.
Who's the new chair?
For heaven's sakes.
Put you on the spot.
I know. She's been there forever. I'll get it.
Is it Marilyn? Marilyn Hossak?
He said she's been there forever, and I sort of gave it away.
That was a tip-off. She has been there forever.
She has been very dedicated to public schools since spring break park in nine sixteen.
She's delighted to be the chair. She said it was on her bucket list to be the chair of that organization, so.
Okay. Any school board subcommittee reports or other items, reports, groups have met, PTO or any other? Kevin?
Just wanted to, for the MSBA report, the recognition luncheon, the Montomedi High School Board is up for recognition, right?
Yes.
Because we are highly trained, although you wouldn't tell it by the reading tonight.
Highly trained in other areas. So the board is receiving recognition for the majority of the board members being through all three phases of training. MSBA has four phases. Phase two, which is financial training, is required by state statute, and we've all been through that. But then in addition to that, we have been through other areas as well. Julia will be recognized for some additional training as well, meeting a marker of three hundred hours, I think, and someone else is recognized as well. We've gone over that before. Yeah. But so a number of us, a number of board members will be recognized. In addition, we will have a reserved table, I believe, so when you go into luncheon on that Thursday, don't sit in the back. You have a table up front. Mike, anything else?
Yeah, PTO met this morning, and I just, I attended the meeting and just sort of updated them that we'll be working on the strategic plan, and they are looking for people to join the PTO for the, this next year as their kids are somewhat aging out. And so if you know some parents that might be interested in joining the PTO, let them know.
Our student rep is supposed to be here by eight oh five, so I hate to adjourn and have him walk in three minutes after we log. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Well, that's okay. So I'll talk for.
So talk slow.
Do what I can. So I'll report on a few thing, a few places I've been since I saw you last one. I, we, I went to the White Bear Chamber Networking Event, and I had an opportunity to present with Wayne Kazmercek. Kazmercek, I did it. Superintendent of White Bear Lake. And what, we together talked about strategic planning, in part because in White Bear, they just went through this process last year with the same facilitator, Dr. Bill Cook. And so we teamed up, so I was able to talk about what we were about to do, and he could talk about the results of, of his process. And so we got good feedback. We were, we also heard from a number of people who participated in the White Bear strategic planning process, how, how, how much they valued the process. They talked about feeling that it was very genuine, and lots of voices were heard. And I think Wayne had said that there were about two hundred people who participated in their process, so I don't, I think, I think that was about, well, we, we could do the same. And district, what, we might be able to, there's opportunity for two hundred people to participate in ours as well. So I'll talk about that later. I also attended our first ever adaptive theater performance. It was Spaghetti and Hot Dog Bun at the high school, and it, there were ten students from our adaptive special education programs, and they, they had a performance and ended with a song as well. And so it, it was a fabulous performance. We had, I, I think there were probably somewhere in the neighborhood of, I don't know, two hundred, three hundred students in the audience as well, and it was, it was fabulous. So I look forward to that being an annual event because I think it was, it was just a wonderful event. And I know you had an opportunity to see it on a different day, so I don't know if you have other.
The audience was just as full, and our high school students who attended were extremely, I think, impressed with their peer students at, at that show and showed a great appreciation for the students on stage.
It was fabulous. I also had an opportunity to do some school visits with, with Julie and Lucy. We visited the middle school and high school this week, and I, we got to talk to Luke a little bit about his, his biology project. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave that for now because that's one of the things that Luke is going to talk a little bit about, I think, and the process he went through for that, for that project. You will be hearing, or it just came out in the E-News for parents, about our Health and Safety Parent Education Night that we have coming up on February sixth. This is a partnership with Washington County, both the sheriff's office and the attorney's office. And we will have four, four different topics, and there'll be both the information, parent education, also some, some personnel, some school personnel, so that parents also understand what we have available in our school in terms of support and resources as well. So I want to highlight that. There'll be more information coming out. There's just a general announcement about it in the E-News right now. And so strategic planning, I wanted to just have an opportunity to talk about that one more time. I know we talk about it constantly, but it's still worth one more time, I think, because we're moving, well, it's not one more time. This is just gonna, you're just gonna keep hearing about it. It's ongoing, so we are getting closer to being able to get started on this. And so I want to just kind of give you some more detail on that. We have, so in, to get to that two hundred people participating, this, this truly is intended to be a process whereby our community, our staff, our students, everyone has an opportunity to really get involved at some level in this process. And there are two kind of phases to it. One is the, we'll start with a planning team, and that team will be made up of, it's a smaller group, it's an intensive three days of working on our, our vision, our mission, our strategies, some objectives as well. And so these, this group will, will be a representative group, a small group that will, will work on one part of our plan. And then that group hands it off and says, okay, we've done this part, now let's take that and make it into action. So we take the vision or the mission of the district and kind of the, the broad overview, and then hand it off to a different group of people and say, okay, now what does that look like concretely? How does this, how do we create action around what it is we've just developed? And so, and, and that, we're going to be sending out a call to all, to the whole community to just say, come and join us and, and be part of this. And that's where we get the, the large participation, hopefully. We hope to. In other districts, both the one I've come, I've most recently been in, in White Bear, there were about seven to eight action teams, and each of those action teams might have fifteen to twenty people on them. So that's what we're hoping for, and that's what we're anticipating. So as a board, what I'm, what I'm asking is for, I'm going to be asking two of you to be on the planning team, and then all others to participate in the action team planning. And so truly, I want to be clear about this, that both parts are important to the, to the work, and they have different roles, but all parts are, all of these make up our whole strategic plan. So it's not just that the planning team is creating the strategic plan. The action plans are part of our strategic plan, and so all parts of that we'll be bringing forward. And, and then by August, then, we will be, oh, so to finish that up, so action plans, the action teams create the action plans, and then they hand it back to the planning team. They come and present and say, this is what we think should happen as a result of our work. And then the planning team gets to have a discussion about it as well, and together, then there's consensus on, here's what the district should do in order to enact the strategic plan. So then we bring it back to you as the board, and at this point, each of you has participated in some part of this, but we bring it back to you as a board, and we say, this is the strategic plan, and we ask you to approve it.
And how long do you think the whole thing takes?
We'll start, so you will start with this overview again in January, but the planning team will meet in February, hand it off to the action teams, which will start meeting probably after spring break near, in March. And then we have scheduled, again in June, for the action teams to be done, hand it back to the planning team, so that it will take, it will take that long, because we want to make sure that we're, we, each of these processes are deep dives into the work. It's not just a survey or cursory conversation. It really is time-intensive, and it, and it's a commitment on the behalf of everyone who participates, and so we're, we're hopeful that people will see that this is worth their time and energy because it's a big investment of time for us, and the, it's intended to take us forward for, for quite some time, so. Okay. All right. And, I'm sorry, I tried to stall until Luke, because we know he's the highlight. I mean.
He really is.
Yeah.
Well, we'll just have to adjourn without, I think. I keep watching the door. He said eight oh five.
Well, this won't be as good as, okay, so I'm going to summarize what Luke said. At the, after we talked to him for a while, and he said this, and I just thought, you know, you need to, to tell people your perspective on this. So he was in biology class, and he had gone through this, they had done, you were there, who was there with me? Who's standing? You both, okay, you were standing there with me. So he, he described the process of learning, just the, the information they had gone through, you know, the, the instruction, the taking notes, really working on, on the topic that he was, and you can describe the topic because it was, it was not what I learned in biology. I will tell you that much. But then at the end, he said, you know, and then we went through this project where we had to synthesize all of this information and be able to explain it to you, and that's where the real learning was. And to me, I mean, just, and he says it so much better, but to me, it was just so, I appreciated how much he appreciated the learning and how much he could appreciate the process and, and be able to articulate how that process helped him learn. I just thought it was really insightful. So I'm sad that he's not here to, to explain it because he would have done it much better. But in general, I just felt like everywhere I went in both the middle and the high school, I felt that engagement and that, just that understanding of students just being able, we went to a science class where they were talking about bone breaks and then proposing solutions for, for athletes, so, yeah.
NFL players. They had a scenario that they proposed a solution for quicker healing for NFL players for their bone breaks. And they all had different solutions or ways for that to happen based on what they had learned in class.
Right.
And then had to build models of what that would look like, too.
Right. And it, and so, I mean, it was, it was striking to me. And also, when we, I'm sorry, now I can't stop, because when we were in the middle school, we were in a social studies classroom where the students, it was, the students were reviewing, but the way they were doing it, they were so engaged and so collaborative in what they were working on. They were really working together and, and talking it through as the, and, and the level of engagement was ju, and, I don't know, just enthusiasm and joy, too. I mean, there was that as well. So anyway, I thoroughly enjoyed my time and my visits in the middle and high school, so thanks to all of you out there watching at home, I'm sure. We had a great time. And the students, the students were just remarkable to me, quite honestly.
So Luke has texted me, he's five blocks away. He's, he's really close, if you don't mind waiting for.
Barb, do you have any more for us?
Oh, boy. What's, I'd have to, I have to think a lot. Does anyone else have any other? Oh, okay.
I actually could say something.
Okay, thank you.
There is a group leadership tomorrow based from the Greater White Bear Lake Area Foundation, the Chamber of Commerce, and Rotary, the two other additional sponsors. We've just started our second year, our second cohort group, and Dr. Lucy Payne is one of the cohort members. And today, we heard a lot of the different introductions, and it was absolutely amazing to me how many Montomedi connections we have and how many connections in education we have. I mean, amazing, really. And there was some really great energy in that room. I was very impressed with the cohort group. So I don't know, Lucy, if you had any thoughts?
It's a wonderful cohort group. The work we've started.
Here it comes, turn your microphone on.
Here it comes. Hey! Will be great in terms of enhancing, I think, leadership in our community. We have three district parents I know of, maybe more, who are also part of that group, who I hope we can maybe corral into taking on some leadership roles in the district through our curriculum advisory committee and other groups and things, because each of the members will have a project, so we'll see what we can do there. And so now, without further ado, we have our student report.
Thanks for fitting me in. I apologize for my tardiness. I was just at a rehearsal for the Metro East Concert Choir, in which several schools around the Twin Cities area were invited to Montomedi to practice for a concert that is next Monday night at seven o'clock. Along with students from our choir program, band students, in concert and jazz band groups will be performing. So I encourage you to come and support our school along with the other schools. Other events that have been, and upcoming events that have been happening around the community. In Wildwood, in, oh, excuse me, in Wildwood in December, on the twenty-first, first grade had a gingerbread house day, and there was an all-school sing-along for staff and students. And tomorrow, there is a winter frolic for kindergarten, which I assume is similar to the fall frolic, except it's in winter. In OH, in December, on the nineteenth, high school musicians visited OH to play and perform for the students. That included the concert choir, which I am involved in, along with the concert band. And on the twenty-first, it was Zephyr's Spirit Day. In January, on the eighth and ninth, the third grades, third graders, excuse me, went to the Bell Museum, which, according to the website, is Minnesota's official natural, natural history museum and planetarium. Well, I can imagine that could have been a, that would have been a blast. And tomorrow, there is a Saints North roller skating party from five fifteen to seven fifteen. All are invited. And the middle school ski club started on last Friday, on the fourth. Four whole busloads of excited middle school students left to the school to Trollhawken Ski Resort, and will be heading to Afton Alps tomorrow. Along with this, rehearsals for the middle school's theater production of Mary Poppins Jr. has started. Performances are on February twenty-eighth and March first and second. At the high school, at this point in the winter sports season, all of the major high school winter sports, including boys and girls basketball, alpine and cross-country skiing, gymnastics, wrestling, boys and girl hockey, have begun competing in conference meets, games, or matches. Remember, you can find more information about these teams and their respective competitions on goeszephyrs.org. on goeszephyrs.org. On December 18th, student leadership council members visited Jackson Elementary and delivered toys bought with money raised at the parent's night out last December. And they got to hang out with kindergarten classes and spent the remainder of the day playing with the toys that we had raised money to buy for them. On Friday, December 14th, choir students left after school to participate in the Clouds Concert at the Mall of America. And rehearsals for the high school theater department's production of Peter and the Star Catcher have started and performances are on, correct me if I'm wrong, Lucy, I know your daughter is involved, February 1st, 2nd, and 3rd?
You're right, but my daughter's not in that one.
Oh, she's not?
No. My son is involved.
First, 2nd, and 3rd at 7:00 on the 1st, 7:00 at the 2nd, and 2:00 on the 3rd. And finally, on January 22nd, there is a band concert at 7:00 PM featuring the 8th grade and symphonic bands. That's all I've got.
Can I add one thing?
Yes, please.
Every two years, we have a visit from our sister school in Costa Rica. And so a Costa Rican visit is coming up. Do you have more information or do you want me to continue?
No, continue, please.
They arrive, I believe, on the 25th. They stay with host families. Last night, when I talked to the band director, we are still in need of one host family. So if there's someone in the audience who would like to host a chaperone and their six-year-old child, we do have that great opportunity for you. There will be many concerts. The bands will work together and there'll be a shared concert on, I'll have to look that up, that's later in January, that is open to the public and is one of our most well-attended band concerts, I believe. I'm afraid it might be the same night as our next board meeting. It is on Thursday, the 31st at 7:00. So.
Yes.
That.
Yes.
Is that it?
One more.
One more.
Kind of playing off of your sports update from the Montomedi High School. I got an email last week, the Montomedi High School hockey team, boys' hockey team, was up on the range, playing some invitational, the name of which I've forgotten. But I got an email from Tim Reardon, who is on the school board in Virginia, and he said that Montomedi team played with passion and they sure had legs. So they, our team won both games, so.
I added one more thing from Luke's report, too, is that Lucy and I attended the Wildwood Sing-Along and that was one of the most unique things I have ever seen. And so I wanted to thank the Wildwood Artist Series for sponsoring that, the artist in residence, because it was very unique and I think it was a fun event for the kids.
Did you shake fruit?
Yes, we shook fruit and did all kinds of very non-Christmas things for a Wildwood Sing-Along. It was really a, it was a very unique event. It was surprising, surprisingly fun.
Would that fit? And a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Okay.
We adjourned.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks, Luke.
Thanks for having me.